Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Calling the school committee meeting to order 7:38 PM on Tuesday, April 2. It's been a long time since we were all on Zoom together. Can't say that I've missed this, but it's still nice to see you all. And thank you again for being flexible. When we changed the night of our meeting so that we could all be here. We're conflicting with the select board meeting and so Milton Access TV is broadcasting them as usual and instead we're doing this Zoom meeting which will be uploaded as a recorded meeting to the YouTube channel. So thanks, everybody, for being flexible. We need to approve our agenda. Does anyone have any changes to the agenda for tonight?
Well, I don't think. Oh, no, I'm sorry. I was getting confused as to what's happened since our last meeting, the government's meeting, but it's not since our government's meeting, since the previous one. Yes, but we have to still be advisory.
Okay. All right. So the first item on our agenda is the Citizen Speak, our public comment portion. We have up to 15 minutes set aside for members of the community to join us to share comments with the school committee for up to three minutes, three minutes apiece. If you would be interested in participating in Citizen Speak, can you please raise your hand at this time so that you can be promoted to panelist? Okay, oh, I see Selena is here as a attendee. She can be promoted.
Yeah, I thought we already promoted her.
Okay, thanks. All right, so just one, one last chance. Is anyone here hoping to join for Citizen Speak? If so, please raise your hand at this time. I do see that we have Sean O'Rourke in the attendees. One thing I'd love to check. As we think about our agenda is, I know that, you know, it doesn't appear we have anyone for Citizen Speak. So we can move on from that. The next up will be the superintendent's report, which does include the statement of interest, which we'll be considering and voting on. I'm wondering if it would make sense to move the school building committee up following the superintendent's report. That might allow Sean to be able to join us for that part of the conversation, but not have to stay through the whole meeting to be last on the agenda. Is everyone okay with that? Sean, would you be okay with that? I guess we can't know unless you're here as a panelist. Can?
You raise your hand to take that as an possible.
Okay. All right, so maybe Glenn, can you go ahead and promote Sean now just so that he'll be here with us? And that will be good, then we can kind of get that topic all done around the same time. Okay. Hi, Sean, thanks for being with us. Just confirming that that's okay with you if we move the school building committee up until after the chair's report?
Yeah, appreciate the baton leadoff. I appreciate that.
Sure, so I'll just hand it over to you, Dr. Burrows.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Happy Tuesday. It's interesting to be meeting on a Tuesday instead of a Wednesday. First update is implementation planning. So last week, our curriculum leadership team, which is really our full leadership team. It's around 30 of our leaders, principals, central office, directors and coordinators. We got together to gather all the information from the fifth and all the other work that we've done to figure out how we're going to collectively do the work of building out this implementation plan by the end of the year. And those of you in schools know that April is kind of like June, where you kind of like wake up one day and then it's June. So we realized we're under a pretty significant time crunch. We had a great, great meeting and we did a lot of work prior to that meeting to organize and think about how to really galvanize our, both our whole leadership team and think about how we're going to get stakeholder input as we take all this information and start to think about what does this mean next year, year after, etc. So we've organized it in the same way that we have the entry plan and the priority report, which is around those, those three priority areas. Those 30 leaders are split off into groups and are working to kind of essentially take the, the, kind of like the main findings from our priority report and start to sift through those and, and really kind of get down into action steps in terms of what does this mean for our work? So there's a lot of coordination that we're working on. They're also, most of these groups are meeting this week and next week and are going to be, one of the things I'll be talking about is stakeholder input in terms of as they're starting to build out graphs, bringing that back out again for kind of one final pass with people just to make sure we're kind of together and aligned and, and folks know where we're headed. I've talked about this previously. But one of the real keys for us is, is building a shared vision and a cohesive vision and making sure that everybody understands what the work is. So, you know, this is not really just like figure out what the, the kind of the golden action steps are for our organization. It's, it's, we're, we're working on building a culture at the same time. And, and I'm very aware of that and I'm tending that in the same way that I'm also tending the kind of objectives and, and the kind of more directed work that we need to do. Second thing, we've got an eclipse coming, which is exciting. Our principals met today. We were kind of talking about communication and how to share information about it. It's, it's exciting. It's also, we also want our students to be safe and understand the, some of the dangers. So we'll be sending out communication later this week. Excuse me. With information, resources and and just being sure that, that folks know how to both appreciate and enjoy it in, in a safe way. Today, we, the third thing I was going to mention tonight is the school building tours that we did today. We've got a few events this week with Arrow Street, which is the architect that was selected. Well, we may hear more about that later on from Sean, I'm not sure, but Sean, great to have you here. And so we had the opportunity today as part of the process of refining, defining our vision for seven, eight upper middle school. We went and toured Weymouth Chapman Middle School and then we went to Situate as well and went to their middle school. And it was really interesting, great conversation, just kind of talking about what our needs are. It was, it was, I think, one of the takeaways that a lot of people had was seeing how much space other schools have compared to kind of what we've been living with for so long that we're I think in some ways, some people are desensitized a little bit and, and being in some of these other spaces and seeing both what's possible from a modern, modern kind of architectural standpoint and where we've progressed in terms of teaching and learning from the kind of 50s and 60s where you know, we were kind of thinking more in a modular way to thinking about spaces that are more flexible, that are geared more towards collaboration, discovery, engagement, those kinds of things. That was exciting. And then just like I said before, seeing just kind of like how, almost how quiet a space is when it's not overcrowded. Like there was a, I, I experienced that myself, just I saw a contrast there. So it was a great day. Look forward to tomorrow. They're coming back and going to a few of our schools, so we'll be going around with them. We'll be asking questions. Principals at each of the, of the three schools they're going to will be taking them around and so they, they can get a sense of kind of where, where we're coming from, what the needs are and kind of ultimately what, what a new space would look like to support who we are and, and what we want for our students. So that is my, that is my update for tonight.
Peter, did you say that Arrow Street went with you to Situate and Weymouth for those tours?
Yep.
Okay. Were those facilities that they designed? Or they were just ones where they could sort of notice what was feeling aligned or what have you?
They were ones that, that were selected by one of the people they worked with, who is our kind of main contact on the design side of, of the teaching and learning side, the, the kind of instructional vision piece of the puzzle. He had a relationship with both of these schools and he knew from talking with us about what we're looking at. And so he, he chose these two schools because of that.
Anyone else have any questions? About that update? So for the motion of, motion for the statement of interest, sorry, to which is something that we need to vote on to submit to the MSBA. Are, are you gonna, Mark, are you gonna present that to us or?
Yeah, I can. I didn't know if maybe it makes sense for, for Sean to give this update on the school building project as a whole and where we are. Leads to, you know, a part of where we are. Project has a, in this VA component, obviously there's a lot of sort of doing outside of this VA, but it's all right with you, I think.
That makes sense. All right, Sean, thanks again for taking the time to join us. Great to see you.
Yeah, thank you and good evening. If you don't mind, I'll just share my screen and give a brief presentation. You just need to make me allowed to present. I apologize.
I see Glenn looking under his glasses, so I think he's looking at it.
You should be allowed. It's interesting.
Yeah, if you click on the three dots when you highlight my picture and go to make a co-host, that's typically how you can do it easy.
Could I ask Milton Access as the host to be able to do that? I don't have the permission to do that.
Yeah, still nothing on my head.
Milton Access TV, I'm trying. Please give me more. You should be a co-host. That might help.
Yep, all good. All right, just let me know when that comes through.
Yep, looks good.
Okay. So, you know, just kind of recap again, you know, for, for, for the committee and also for the public. School building committee is made up of nine members. The five of us at the top are a mix of designing construction professionals that work for the school building committee. On the lower left are two representatives from this committee, Dr. Miranda and Mark Loring. And on the bottom right is two members of the select board. So it's kind of a well-versed mix of individuals. Another kind of recap and overall timeline of, you know, we just passed our five-year mark since we're formed. We were formed in a special town meeting in February of 2019. We spent the first couple of years kind of programming the school program and also identifying land. You know, we, we went through, developed, found a site along Gao Road and developed a number of options, an initial one, which we then revised and came back last May for a vote that we won with a two-thirds majority. What we've been doing since then is basically team forming. As mentioned by the superintendent previously, we've teamed up with Arrow Street Architecture as their designer and also with PMA consultants to form our team. The goal of that team is to develop conceptual kind of preliminary design and develop better cost estimate of that to come to the town in anticipation of a fall town meeting, requesting funding for the construction of the project. And then following an anticipated passing of that funding, which will require a two-thirds vote, go to a town-wide vote, which we're hoping will align with the presidential election. By doing so, you know, ease the burden a little bit on the town clerk, who we know has had a busy couple of months. You know, the, the basis for what we were doing for a project is based on a 2019 space needs study that was performed by DRA Architecture. DRA did the design of the schools back in the previous school building project back in 2006, 2008. What they, what they identified 2019 was we're approximately 26 classrooms short. Again, that was 2019, we're now in 2024. So the space needs problems that were identified at the elementary school level have now migrated, as you're well aware, up into the middle school. So, you know, I know everyone on this call on the committee is familiar with the classroom conversions, but I show this mainly more for the public that may not be aware. You know, over the course of time, the, the district has made space internally to a lot of these buildings by converting non-traditional educational space into educational space. Gymnasiums, you know, music on stages with kids sitting on floors. Teachers operating out of carts. Teachers in hallways. Students in stairwells. And then, you know, the, the one that I always point out of, you know, our libraries, where we're converting space in the libraries. This is mainly due, you know, the, our enrollment over the years. So the current enrollment that you see here peaked in 2019, essentially right before COVID. There was a downturn on enrollment, obviously, from COVID the following year, but it's kind of come back up and it stayed flat. As you can see from this graph, we're essentially operating one entire grade level in our elementary school buildings above our capacity, which is that horizontal yellow line at 1900. So the existing configuration of our schools that are there right now is displayed here, where we have a mixture of pre-K and K through fifth grade at the elementary school level. The Pierce Middle School, which houses sixth, seventh and eighth, and then our high school. What I've proposed is, and we're working towards with Arrow Street and PMA, is the construction of a new upper middle school housing seventh and eighth grade and also pre-K. By doing this at the Pierce School, which currently, which previously held, would hold three strands, we'll now bring that down to two freeing space up of them. At the elementary school level, we'll strip out pre-K in fifth grade and essentially create those 26 classrooms by, you know, pulling those spaces out. And then further at the high school, as we free up space at the existing Pierce, we'll be able to move some, some administrative offices over there. Essentially, under this one project, it's addressing overcrowding at every level throughout the, the district. So again, back to the graph of the enrollment, you know, as the project would happen and we strip out pre-K in fifth grade, we now bring those numbers down below that horizontal line, but you know, for us, you know, solving this problem. Our site selection, as I mentioned, we're looking at a parcel of land that we're creating up on Gao Road. The first part of that project would be realigning Gao Road. And by doing so, opening up a portion of conservation land, a small portion and another portion of parkland and merging them. And as we merge them, you know, basically provides a site for the school. And then as we develop the school, you know, vertical, we can construct it. The team that you'll see presented in the coming months for this is, you know, from our project management perspective, Sean Burke is our owner's project manager and Seamus O'Connor, both of which are Milton residents. Sean actually has a daughter at Cunningham. Arrow Street Architecture that you see here, these are some of the professionals. I think Mike Parala, the educational planner, superintendent Burrows, is the person you were referencing earlier for the tours. The nice thing with Arrow Street is, you know, the term net zero for buildings for them is a normal thing. It's not a specialty. It's, it's, it's there. It's basically how they operate right now. And it was an attractive thing when we're looking at them. To clarify, we're not saying we're doing a net zero school, but it's nice to know that that tool is in the toolbox that if we can do it, we might. The other thing that Arrow Street brought, along with the other, the other architectural team that we interviewed, is a long list of sub consultants. If anything that we've heard, there are a lot of concerns with this project. Needless to say, we can address any of those concerns going forward with this team of sub consultants that we have. Now, what you see here is what Arrow Street has provided as, you know, their first option that they looked at. They refer to it as a consolidated strategy. And this, what it did is house the pre-K, the seventh and eighth grade under a single building and connected through different wings. So what you're seeing here is one option that they're looking at. The second option that they're looking at is what they call their campus strategy, which is the preschool in a separate building away from the seventh, eighth grade. So as we're working with Arrow Street now, these are two of the options. We're kind of bouncing back and forth. At this point, while it looks complex with their renderings, it's mainly like block diagrams we're working with. We're going to further refine these and again, fine tune it as we go along. One of the other things we mentioned with Arrow Street is we wanted them to compare projects they've done that were MSBA or Mass School Building Authority projects, which are on the lower graph, compared against non-MSBA privately funded or town-funded projects. And as you can see, a town, a hundred percent town-funded project, we can do a lot quicker. There's less, less checks and balances as there is with state-funded MSBA program. Part of, part of the work we've done up to this point of identifying a site, identifying program and stuff like that has really jump-started us and we feel we could, you know, get the project done a lot quicker. The project that they highlighted for us that they did non-MSBA was the Brook High School in Boston. As you can see here, it was a beautiful building that was constructed in a very short timeline. So finally, you know, with, with, with Arrow Street, we asked them to look at where we're at and where we need to get to and could they do that? So with the funding that we were allocated at the fall, last fall's town meeting, where, as we said, we're aiming for this fall's town meeting, 2024, sorry about that, to present a cost estimate and a schematic design that we request funding for the overall project. So essentially our next steps, as I mentioned, getting to the fall, getting a good construction number that we can do with that. And then following that, that vote at the special, at the town meeting in the fall, a town-wide vote. The important thing, you know, for people to understand is with the annual elections that are coming up in April, the town meeting members that are elected to that town meeting will be the ones voting on this in the fall. And with that, I'll open it to any questions.
Arianna, go ahead.
Hi, Sean, how are you? For this presentation, I know it's been a while. I did have a few questions. I think the schematics look great. And it's nice to see it kind of coming together. So appreciate all the work that you've done. And, you know, as Dr. Burrows mentioned, touring the other schools, it's, it's really great that you're doing all this background work and research beforehand. Do we have any like updates on costs? Now that you're getting into it a little more?
Yeah, so not yet. So the initial things that the architect is working on with PMA consultants is kind of internal coordination with the district leadership team. Basically, planning what goes out, what goes on within the building. As we, our other goal that I forgot to mention too is some external coordination with neighbors. But, you know, while we're doing both of those, the owner's project manager has a dedicated cost consultant. And as we're, as we're finalizing some of this stuff, we'll be able to highlight that further. But at this point, right now, we don't have that.
When you would have more, like a number, like that's?
I, I'm thinking it's probably going to be sometime over the summer.
Okay. And that in terms of your fall override that you're mentioning, would that be the full cost of construction? Or would it be for like the, the initial design? Like how, how do you plan to phase that out?
Yeah, I think our initial ask is going to be for the full design and the construction together. You know, I, I feel it would probably be best to just do everything at once. You know, the, the entire thing with a project of this magnitude, time is money. You know, for projects this big, the quicker we can address it and get it done, the, the less expensive it will be. So for, for me, my goal would be to get this done. The, the one thing I forgot to, to mention too is, you know, the, the planned opening date that they're looking at this project is the fall of 2027. And as I said, it'd be, select board, when I presented this, that's assuming all green lights, you know, our funding goes through and we go, go, go and get this done. And by doing it quicker, again, it'll save us a lot of money in escalation costs.
Okay. And then in terms of like, once you have kind of, you know, the, the numbers, the total num, cost, like, would you be able to kind of set up like how much it's going to cost? An average home in Milton, like in terms of taxes over like, is it like over the next 30 years? Like, how does that work? Because I think that would be really helpful. I mean, I, I think the designs look great. I actually really like the campus format. Because I think it gives you more ability in terms of if you need to take span and so on and so forth. And I also think like, you know, just having a seventh grader, I'm sure they'd like to be with the, the older kids. And it might be a little strange to have the, the, the pre-K students with them. So I do like it's separate. Do you, is that something that you're going to be considering in terms of like, you know, what the, the cost is going to be and like year over year?
Yeah, so. So to answer your question directly, the, the tax implications that will be happening, once we have a finalized number and know what our bond rate would be, we would be able to, you know, enunciate what that tax impact would be. There would be a calculator that would either do, you know, the median home price to see the, the median tax impact there. Or ones that I've seen, and that's what I'm actually pushing for, where you actually put the true price of your house so you can get the true impact. So it's not just one that you'd have to do math and, you know, scale it on your own. The, the, the important thing to realize too is what we'll be going after is a debt exclusion, not an override. So they're, they're a little nuanced and I'm starting to get educated on this a little bit. So an override that happens hits you immediately, right? So once you pass a tech, an operational So an override that happens hits you immediately, right? So once you pass a tech uh operational override for the town. Uh, your taxes go up immediately. Uh, with a debt exclusion, it's as you issue debt along the construction project. Then it would vary according to that. So what happens is even if we pass this in the fall. It's not immediate that the tax increase would hit them because we're not breaking ground on the project at least for another year.
Okay, and then, but okay, so at some point, like for instance, let's say we do an operational override next year. We would have see the impact of that and then whatever happens a year from now on this project. So there would be that, okay. Um, great, uh, this is really helpful. Thank you so much. It looks.
No problem. Thank you.
All right, go for it.
Sorry, just to jump in slightly to to the a good question that is asking around timeline. You know, it it depends on if we follow the timeline, stay on schedule, but in Arrow Street's initial proposal. Um, which um, you know, is a public note. If they're essentially talked about like concepts of figuring out the educational concept. Between now and kind of end of May, beginning of June, and then at that point going out for an initial cost estimate. And then a second process, you know, being after schematic designing to next phase of. Of where you really refine what the building's going to be, the materials, some of those things uh that. Then resulting in a second process, we're around September. So those are two, two areas which we have a little more information on, on how this is going to be.
Mark, I'm so sorry, but your speaker keeps in going in and out for me, so I I miss like every third word. I'm so sorry.
Okay, so maybe Mark is go putting his headphones in. Does anyone else have any? Other questions or are you, Mark, are you ready to kind of?
Can you hear me now? Okay, great. Sorry about that.
Sorry, I couldn't tell if it was like on my end or?
No, it's 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 me. Um, uh, Arrow Street, within their initial proposal, when we um before we hired them, as we were evaluating them. They had a draft schedule, which again is is tentative at this point. We we gotta meet things, but essentially that. The idea in their mind was that we work on this con- this general like educational concept idea, which is some work that's happening right now with like visiting school sites and. Educational um program planning and things like that that um Dr. Rose and his team are doing. And that kind of giving us uh enough information to have an initial cost estimate. Around end of May, beginning of June, and that's like tentative as of what they put in their proposal. And then after that point, moving into schematic design where we'd have uh more detail on. What the school's going to look like, what what it will be. It's not construction drawings, but again, more detail. And they do a second cost estimate after that to refine that number further and that being more around the September timeline. And that's based upon their their initial um proposal. And I I think we are remaining on time. Again, Sean said very eloquently, like time, time is money here and time is tight. And I want to make sure we. We move quickly to save as much money on escalation as we can while still having a good ultimate product. But those are, those are two touch points we should have before any, anything comes in front of voters uh as it relates to cost.
Go ahead, Anna.
Sorry, I just had one follow up question. Are you noticing, Sean, like the construction costs? Are they kind of like, I know with COVID, they went up, there was a lot of demand. Are you noticing it coming down at all or?
It, yeah, so for. Yeah, good question. The escalation that was going on during COVID, you know, for. Material shortages, kind of long lead items and stuff like that. It's kind of uh definitely come down. Um, you know, it part of the, you know, the in- the the rising of interest rates right now has slowed a lot of like private development. Construction projects, which has freed up some contractors. So, you know, on our end, it would be nice to kind of get them under contract while they're light and get better construction numbers for them. Um, but yeah, the over uh cost of everything is still higher than what they were pre COVID. Um, but the escalation that we're seeing, you know, the years after that i- is is not occurring right now.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Sean? Um, thank you so much for bringing us this update. It's exciting. Um, yeah, Mark, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to take at least another opportunity to thank Sean, like. You know, we all know how much time we put into school committee as a volunteer. Sean has taken that even, I feel like he does even way more than me. Uh, he puts in so much time on this. Um, again, all is volunteer and keeps our whole committee organized and moving forward. And luckily now he's got a little bit of help with uh PMA and the architects, but just so much time and energy and um. And talent from like what he brings from his profession within in these conversations. So. Uh, want to make sure we publicly thank him once again uh for for again, five years at this point that he's he's really been doing this. And then help them push this along for for our kids. So thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, just just to be clear, it's a it's a committee of nine. So, you know, it's not all me.
Well, we appreciate you. Um. I think the next piece, and I don't know if it it would be good if you could stick around for this part in case there are any questions. That um you might be able to help answer, but. Uh, Mark, is it okay if we segue now into the um MSBA statement of interest? And if you kind of, I mean, thank you for taking your time to do this on behalf of the school committee. Um, can you maybe just bring everybody up to speed on? You know. Basically, the fact that we're doing this once, once again. Um, and we'll just make sure anyone with questions gets those answered before we do need to take a vote. In order to um stay on time for submitting this.
Absolutely. Um, so the statement of interest is something that we have to submit annually. In order to be considered for funding through the Mass School Building Authority. Um, Sean obviously walked through kind of the expected timeline that we're working through right now, which is. Assuming we are not uh going, doing a project through MSBA because they they did not pick us up last year. Um, that said, we obviously want to keep all our options on the table if for some reason. The project is delayed or the town decides not to support this project or, you know, if anything else happens, um. We want to continue to submit um again and and cross our fingers that this year is is different. So that that is what this submission is. I will credit um Ada Rose Marin, uh former school um committee member for. Essentially doing ninety percent of this work. I updated her uh submission from last year, which is the most recent thing. So I I can take o- only a very small slice of credit um for the submission. But essentially it is taking, you know, what the school committee approved last year. Updating with a little with the new NASDAQ numbers of enrollments, updating with a a little bit more information on what we've done related to capital projects. Uh, in the last year and any changes to uh class sizes, numbers um of sections across the school sites, things like that. The those types of changes have have been made. Um, but again, ninety ninety percent of it is is consistent with what we submitted last year. And I assume also with what we submitted kind of uh the several years prior, so. Um, you did two priorities under which we are submitting and you have to identify one of, I believe there are four priorities. Um, to submit uh to the MSBA of the things they think are like most important for funding. Uh, we're submitting under priority two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding. And priority four, prevention of severe overcrowding, expected result from increased enrollment. Those are the same priorities we have previously submitted on. So all those things are are consistent. Um, just from a timeline and process perspective, we have to submit this by next Friday, the twelfth. Um, and we do that through an online portal, uh which I will do. Um, Dr. Bruce gave me access to. Uh, as the representative for the school building committee. Um, it has to, it requires a vote from the school committee um with a notarized letter sign or a letter signed by uh the chair. And it requires a uh vote and approval from the select board with a notarized letter from the town clerk. Certifying the vote from the select board. Um, so those are are the two entities that have to approve this in order for us to submit. And we have to submit again copies of those letters um as as proof that these votes happened. So I believe the select board is voting on it this evening. Um, and so we uh see as a committee see fit to approve it and as the select board does too, then we are. You know, a good bit ahead of of schedule of getting this done by this month.
I definitely appreciate the approach of keeping our options open. I mean, that's the smart thing to do and. As we've seen, it, you know, year over year. Who gets funded, it depends on who has applied and what their needs are, because it's all relative to the pool uh for any given year. I feel like we have seen. Most of the schools be receiving funding, you know, there are a lot of schools in dire straits with buildings that are like crumbling down around them. Uh, where it's not overcrowding necessarily that they're addressing, but rather like. Facilities that are un- unsafe um for kids, so. Yeah, we'll just.
Yeah, just on that point, we were hopeful that with the increased funding for the MSBA that that would uh result in a a greater likelihood that we would get. Um, funded uh that happened last year, that we obviously were not funded, so. Um, that's still disappointing. Yes, every year is a a new opportunity. Um. And you know, as you say, um, there are uh many, many, many communities that are submitting on an annual basis that are not funded. And uh, you know, and throwing our hat in the ring is the only way to to be in the conversation, but um it certainly is. Um, not something we think is a high likelihood necessarily that that will get in, but I again, I I hope I am wrong. Um, I will also say that the funding level for the MSBA has has continued to drop as it relates to kind of a percentage overall of. The school building project. Um, and so that, you know, when Milton did it, it was ninety percent. Uh, when we did it about fifteen, eighteen years ago, uh and at this point, it's closer to forty percent. Um. And obviously also, as you saw from the Sean's presentation, the timeline of the project drags out. So if we e- end up going through MSBA, uh somehow, even if it were approved this year. There's zero chance that we will have a building open in fall of twenty twenty seven. Um, so that that's just a a trade off and. Um, conversation we'll need to need to have if if we end up getting selected at some point by the MSBA. Sean.
Yeah, just quickly, so you know, for the options that are there. Uh, MSBA weighs overcrowding, uh the two options that we we picked as the highest. Um, they understand the impacts on the educational environment for of students because of overcrowding. Um, you know, so for them, when we submit these, uh ha- having those as our priorities and, you know. And describing it in length for, you know, what Ada's done and Mark has rehashed. Um, I hope gives us a better advantage for that. Uh, but I just want to let everybody know, like, those those two priorities that we picked there. And are experiencing are the highest uh rated ones from MSBA when they review the applications.
Okay, that's good to know. Does anyone have any other questions? Okay, go ahead, Anna.
Um, so I did have a question. I know we've submitted this a several year row and have not gotten it. I was just wondering, like, what are we doing differently this year to make ourselves stand out? Uh, it seems like we've kind of. Um, submitted the the proposal in the same, like, under the same categories before. So I'm just wondering, like, I know there are a lot of, as you mentioned, that have different types of needs more so than what we have. But um, you know, just to how to like. I mean, I I do this for like at work a lot where we, you know, we're submitting proposals or responding to RFPs and. Um, you have to differentiate yourself every time, right? So I was just curious as to what we're doing really this time for us to even consider, or us to be considered.
Yeah, I can jump in just as looking over the um SOI, uh, cause I had the the same thought of just like what. You know, i- is there a way we could adjust this in some way to make this a stronger application? Um, the, you know, the SOI is. Pretty uh prescriptive as relates to like the very specific questions it asks around things as simple as like. How many boilers do you have at each school site? How many windows? Uh, it also is that you have to submit it based on a single facility. Um, so we obviously are experiencing overcrowding across all of our sites, uh but we are submitting in under Cunningham Elementary. Uh, as we've done in years past, because that's one of the sites we have the most severe overcrowding at. Um, you know, a- as I, there's also an issue of there's a character limit uh of what you like. I you can't just keep going on and on as much as I was trying to add more text. I had to actually like delete some old text. Um, so, yeah, uh. The I could not really see within Ada's submission places where she had left off detail that I thought would be particularly um. Uh, uh persuasive uh to the committee. I think she has named the kind of length of time in which we've had these issues. The growth of the enrollment, the uh the number of additional kind of classrooms and sections that have been created since. The the original schools were built, the impact on programming as it relates to all of the classroom conversions that have been done over the last. Um, you know, many years that that Glenn has helped oversee as as uh many other people. Um, so, you know, in looking through that, I I didn't see anything. Obviously. If there's anything that any of the committee members uh if you saw and thought like, hey, oh, I think this is a strong, strong statement, I would be thrilled to add it. Um, is it certainly, I think, is again, the the question, Anna, of just like, what what can we do to make our case? As strong as possible and make them pick us off of the pile. Um, but given how how prescriptive it is in terms of the information they are asking. From my lens of looking at it's kind of new, I I didn't necessarily see anything that that jumped off the page to me.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize just to jump into, you know, when when we are denied by MSBA. Uh, they don't give reasoning to us, so they don't, they don't give feedback. They were allowed to like integrate or feedback into our our next submittal. Um, what they do do is in their process, you know, we submit this in April. Um, in the fall, we typically hear back for for like an oral interview where they they. Uh, we'll call representatives of the town, interview them to ask questions about the statement of interest. And then follow up with a site visit. We, so we got to the site visit on our second try. Uh, I think that was twenty twenty. Uh, and you know, so during that head to site visit actually by cell phone. Because it was during COVID, they couldn't do in the schools. Um, so we were close a couple of years ago. Uh, and you know, our hope is, you know, uh again, with repetitive submissions. Um, you know, they'll they'll understand that this is a dire need and it's not just something we're one off.
So this is a lengthy motion. Um.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in, I can.
Make the motion, Mark.
Yeah, it isn't uh Lizzie's point. It is, um, it's a prescribed motion. So what I'm gonna read is. From the MSBA and says it has to be this exact language uh for the motion that that we make, both we make and the select board. But just changing the name of the the entity that's holding the vote, so. Um, I'll make a motion uh that having convened in an open meeting on April second to twenty twenty four. Prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Milton School Committee, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The statement of interest form to be submitted to the MSBA by no later than Friday, April twelfth, twenty twenty four. For consideration in twenty twenty four for the Cunningham Elementary School. Located at forty four Edge Hill Road, Milton, Massachusetts. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories. Of which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority two, elimination of existing severe overcrowding. Priority four, prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments. And hereby further spec- specifically acknowledged is that by submitting this statement of interest form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitments from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town to filing an application for the funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
I'll second that. And if there's no further discussion, then we'll take a roll call vote. And if there's no further discussion, then we'll take a roll call vote. Member Lauren?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Member two?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Have a ha- have a great night.
Yeah, thanks for joining. Thanks, thanks again, Mark. Um, so under the chair's report, just a couple of quick updates. Um. One thing, uh, obviously, um. We po- ended up postponing the superintendent evaluation discussion to our next meeting, which is April twenty fourth. Um, looking forward to that. And as far as updates from last week. Um. I can bring the update that regarding our budget. Um, the warrant committee did unanimously approve to recommend our level service budget at their meeting last week. Um, the warrant committee did not re- um, support our request for the um ability to reallocate capital funding. That was included in FY twenty five uh budget for technology largely Chromebooks and on the floor scrubber. Um, we had made that request to be able to. Um, reallocate those funds toward our top priority needs for positions that have been identified. Um, that were not able to be included um in in a level service budget as they are our needs based budget. On the vote for warrant committee was five yes and seven no with some extensions. Um, I, you know, let them know, um. As I also let the capital planning improvement committee know when we had a discussion there later last week. Um, you know, at capital, some of the same reservations were raised that were raised by the warrant committee. Um, and you know, where I left things with them was just. Uh, you know, we as a school committee and as a district leadership team will continue to work to. Figure out how we can address these needs that are clear and very important. Um, and. Uh, we'll just have to keep thinking creatively about that and hoping that additional funding sources come to light in in the coming weeks as. As they, you know, sometimes do, um, while we learn from the state where we exactly come out. Uh, with state aid, for example. Um, so I I think that's. What we want to reassure people that, um, just because these hot priority positions as of yet. You know, don't have a funding source attached to them. Um, that doesn't mean we're not still working to. I get to the place where we can get secure those um teachers at Pierce. Reading interventionist, um, hopefully adjustment counselor. So that's kind of where we are coming out of those meetings last week. Um, my last update just for the public is that we had a great uh another quarterly governance retreat. Last week as the school committee with Dr. Burrows. Um, these meetings have been really productive. That was our fourth one for the year. Um. And what we spent our time on was continuing to refine our school committee handbook document. Uh, which is coming along and it outlines our operating procedures and key policies for school committee governance. And our goal is that it will really support incoming new school committee members. Um, as well as keep all school committee members. Um, sort of on track with what our responsibilities are and how we can be most effective in our work, so. It's exciting that we're making great progress on creating that document for ourselves. Um. It's exciting to be doing that in partnership with you, Dr. Burrows, and we'll get that ready in the coming weeks. Um. And it will ultimately become something that will be shared as a public document. Um, so looking forward to that. Uh, those were my quick updates under the chairs report. Does anyone have anything to add on any of those topics? Yes, Mark.
Um, sorry, I feel like I've talked too much already today. Um, I just want to thank you, uh. Lizzie was able to join the capital improvement uh planning committee after the warrant committee's votes. Um, and again, just appreciate how you. Um, communicated our needs and and kind of the reasoning for this um unconventional um ask that we were making of. Uh, transferring capital improvement funds towards our general budget in order to support these. Um, these much needed positions that we as a committee kind of voted on. I think you represent, in my my opinion, you represent us. Very well, uh, spoke eloquently as you typically do, um, of just kind of why we did this because I know there was not. Broad um approval or agreement that this is something we'd need to do. I also, you know, I I think. I hear a lot within the facilities advisory committee that Anna and I are on from from several of the members who've been there for. Twelve, you know, twenty years at this point, uh, and and have much more expertise in kind of long term history as a Milton um. That than I do of kind of concerns related to the school's historical, um. You know, leading up to the original school building project, the school's historical inability to maintain the buildings. And that resulting in them becoming so dilapidated, they needed to be. Um, needed to be, you know, obviously totally rebuilt every single one of them and that, you know, the concern being, hey, having a separate capital fund. You know, prevents the school from making these choices of like prioritizing positions over the ability to maintain these facilities long term. And I think I I completely understand that. Uh, I think those are easy kind of lapses that. You know, within a single year, a school committee or school leadership could make to say, hey, we're gonna prioritize this over. The leaky roof, we'll just patch it and kind of move on. I'll say like my, you know, I I heard that from Richard Wells when I spoke to him, uh, to try and advocate for this. And obviously, you know, heard that a little bit on the warrant committee and and also my advocacy, um, that I said to them. Um, and hopes that that we could get this funding. I think that's a little bit different in this situation that like we're not. We weren't asking for things that were going to address the facility. We're asking for Chromebooks, like that was the big, the big piece. And to me, that really is an operational item and that was raised within the warrant committee, so. Um, and then the other is floor scrubbers, which while that's facilities, while that's capital. I just still struggle with like that. We as a town are saying that it is more important that we provide Chromebooks and floor scrubbers. Than we are to provide middle school teachers for overcrowded spaces and classes, uh, and you know, reading interventions for. Uh, kids coming out of pandemic, moving into fourth grade that that greatly need it. Um. And for transparency sake, my kid's a third grader. He'll be moving into fourth grade next year. Um, I don't know if he'll need a reading inter- uh interventionist, but that's certainly something that, you know, I'm sure classmates of his, uh. Will. Um, so I just wanted to provide that perspective of like, that's, that is why I believe so strongly that. The warrant committee should have voted to approve this, capital improvement committee should have voted to approve this, because it feels, feels strange that because of. You know, tradition or people slight uncomfortable, you know, feeling slightly uncomfortable with. This idea of opening Pandora's box that these services potentially aren't going to be provided. I I certainly. Uh, appreciate your sentiment, Lizzie, your positive can do attitude of like, we will find another way. I I've appreciated the committee's ability at this point to. Again, continue to look in um novel ways since we found out that an override was not going to be possible to fund these positions. I'm certainly hopeful that we can continue to do that and find something going into the fall. Um. But it did feel like this was one of our our better options, uh, and now that door door is closed, and so that is. Again, just, uh, I'm I'm saddened by that because I I know the the potential impact that has for for our kids. Um. So just just wanted to provide that um context uh for anybody in the public to watching this.
Thanks, Mark. Any other? Comments anyone wants to add? Yes, Anna.
Uh, I really appreciate both of you for really advocating for this and, you know, I still am just. Deeply saddened that we cannot go first, bring override. I get that there are lots of issues with that, but. You know, now we're looking at a potentially um debt exclusion override in the fall. So I I it just really, I'm just really struggling with the fact that we couldn't have asked for like. A small enough override just to get us through this year to kind of, you know, help with those positions that Dr. Rose is. You know, mentioned in his priority art and is needed in implementation uh planned phase. Uh, because it's it really just a bummer that, you know, I I guess we can, you know, um. Come up with various reasons why it can't be done, but it's just, it's really just a bummer that we have to kind of. Kind of find money here and there to support our students with sources they really need. And I'm bummed that we're in this position.
I'd like to make a comment. Thank you. I'm sorry to put my hand up. I think as a town. We have gotten past the place of reasonableness when it comes to funding the services we need. Whether it's what the warrant committee supports or the select board is recommending. Each of the departments is at the hostage of these groups. And for those who are listening, I just believe that as a town, we have to decide who we want to be when we grow up. I don't think it's fair that our kids are held hostage by a group of people that are meeting in a basement or a group of people that are sitting upstairs in a building. It's, we're not having the real conversation about revenue and the fear about taxes and the fear about. Getting a building that can fit our kids in it has become a source of angst. What's happened? Like, we're past the p- the point of reasonableness. And I hope, as as you all all know, I am not running for school committee again. But I hope our community can come together to prioritize what's important, which is the residents of the town. It's not these, um. We've, I think we've lost sight of what's important and I hope that we can do better and hopefully that's what I'll be spending some of my time on. Once I leave the school committee, but thank you for the people who are supportive of the schools, who recognize the need. Whether it came from capital planning or an override. But eventually we will, we need a school building. We will have a vote in the fall and I hope that our community can rise to the occasion. And make a decision that's in the best interest of our students and not a petty skirmish or petty battle to win a contest that. Makes all of our kids lose. Thanks.
Oh, Selena, anything you want to add?
Yeah, no, I mean, I I think I I agree with a lot of what I've heard. I think, you know, it's, um. I think I share some of Mark's comments that really was our effort. Um, to try to fill the need, knowing full well that the override was off the table already. Uh, so this was one creative way to find support for the needs that we have in our schools right now. It wasn't a sustainable solution over time and we're not naive to think that that was the long term solution. Um, but definitely was a creative effort. Uh, but I do agree with you as well that. You know, we will continue to look for ways able to address the need of our students. Um, and I think I also echo some of, um, you know, what. Um, that Beverly just said, which is really, we need to think about what's best for our kids and we know that. We need a new building. That's, that's, that's the case, but we also need to be able to support the operating costs. That come with the new. Um, and we have right now the ongoing operating needs that we have, um, beyond a level service budget. That is not the way we should be thinking. We should be thinking about what is it that we need to do in order to set ourselves up. For change in our, in our schools, um, that we want to sustain, uh, to be the model town that we want to be. And, you know, I've said it before in our meeting, we have a new leader. And I believe so much, uh, that when we have a leader who has a vision, we need to support them and give them. The tools that he needs and the team needs in order to execute against a beautiful vision that's coming together. So I hope that, um, we can do better, um, going forward as a town, not just as a school committee, not just as. District, but as a town. Um, but I thank everyone for continuing to work towards that, um, together.
Thank you all for all those comments. Um, definitely agree and. We will keep, keep working at this, keep talking about it. Um, right now, we have a finance subcommittee report. As we move into our committee reports.
Uh, our sole item on the agenda for the finance subcommittee report is to approve vendor warrant number thirty eight. It is in the amount of three hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-nine cents payable on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Can I get a motion?
So.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, member Vargis? That's okay. I do the same.
Sorry, I have like on my screen, like usually during our in-person meetings, I'm looking at all my documents and now I have to like toggle back and forth, so. You know where I was. Um, yes.
Remember Chu?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member Lori?
Yes.
Dr. Miranda?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and that's it for the finance subcommittee. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. So now, Anna, we have the policy subcommittee.
Alright, guys, ready? This is gonna be a lot. Um, alright, so you have a. Documents in your folder that have all the policies reviewed as a policy subcommittee last week. Um. Uh, Peter and Glenn have been so great to streamline this process and we have been able to tackle. Quite a few. I think we're gonna complete, get to D by the end of this year, maybe even more further. Anyway, so we met last week, uh, we went through all of section B. Uh, we decided to discuss policy BIA further at. The governance retreat, which I believe was reaffirmed with no changes. Then we went through all of section C. Um, and decided, we made a motion to bring both section B and C to the full school committee. For a first reading tonight with the following recommendations. Do you want me to list all of these? Cause there are like a thousand in here. Or can I just say, there are a series that will be, we'll be, we'd be adopting or adding. The M A S E recommendations, um, within sections B and C. We have a few, several that we're re- reaffirming with the following, um, the following policies with no changes. And they're all listed and each one has a brief prescription next to it. Um, and and for, um, we're adopting new policies with a few edits. Uh, policy B B B C dash slash B B B E, uh. And renaming policy BDB, BDC to BDB. Uh, and renaming policy BED B dash E to BEDB. And so on and so forth. I can read all of these out if anyone wants.
I think it's okay because they're all listed.
Okay, alright.
I mean, well, because it's it's for the members, like, we can all see them, right? And then members of the public can also see them because they're listed on our agenda, which is.
Perfect. And then we are deleting um several policies. So I I would just again like to reiterate. Process has been so helpful and um central office leadership team has really streamlined this and. We have been able to get through so many policies in a short amount of time and, uh. It's really just made us, this whole process very, and I appreciate all the work that went into it. And for, um, getting us to this point. Thank you both. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Anna, for keeping us on track. This is not the most glamorous work there is, but it's really important.
I feel like I'm trying to like, you know, when you do those like vocal training voices or something, I feel like that's what I'm doing. We're like saying these policies out or something, but anyway, but. Yeah, it's been great and I really appreciate all the work and it's been. yeah, it's been great and I really appreciate all the work and it's been so great having Lizzie and Val on the on the committee as well. And so that's thank you both.
So does anyone have this? So this is the first reading. So does anyone have any questions about any of these? Because we're not voting on these yet. We'll vote next time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you could still ask questions and make suggested changes prior to the vote at our next meeting, but now is a good time if you have any. Mark, go for it.
Sorry, just quick clarification. I assume the edits um to the policies, can we find that within the policy subcommittee folder? Like that edited, the actual like edited language? Or is that going to be shared in the next meeting?
Thank.
Go luck.
Cool. Yeah, Doctor Pavlicek?
There there is a summary of the changes, but not a redlined version in actually in the school committee folder for tonight for section B and section C. For the six or eight uh policies that are being edited, if you want, we can put together a redlined version of those just to show what the edits are for those. But for the ones that are either being adopted as is um from M A S C, you'll have the M A S C and the current version in your folder already for the ones who are being deleted or added from M A S C where we have no current version, those are also in your folder as well. So um it would probably be only the uh edit ones that we would need a redlined version of so you can see what the changes are.
Just on the M S A C part, you you say we have that in the folder, just where where is the like the M S A C, M A S C version of the policies? Because I know where to find the originals. Um, but I don't I don't actually know where I find the M S A C, M A S C version. But again, if you want to clarify that offline, dude, that's something just.
It it's actually in the in the policy subcommittee folder.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
It's in the last policy subcommittee folder.
Yeah. Hey.
And just an another question in terms of those that are being needed, is it just because they're not in M A S C?
They're not in M A S C. It was their their old policies, some of them from the early two thousands that were from a NASDAQ policy handbook in two thousand and five or some of them were um added at different points, but they don't have a a um comparable policy in in the M A S C and we didn't see the need to keep them. They were either redundant to state law or, you know, unnecessary procedures.
Got it. Thank you.
Or ones that we just weren't following as well. So, you know, stating we're going to do goal setting in that this way or that way, but they they weren't driving our work at all, so they were, they were dead.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, great. Well, when we meet on April twenty fourth, we will be in person, so we will be able to vote these more efficiently, much more efficiently than we would have been able to do if we were trying to do them by roll call on Zoom. So that's something to be thankful for. Um, but thanks again, Anna, Peter and Glenn. Um, and with that, our last um committee report is facilities.
Uh, yeah, so facilities advisory committee met um on the twentieth, somewhere we last met? Yes, on the twentieth. Um, and uh just want to name that this was Chris Hayden's last meeting as consolidated facilities director uh at the facility advisory committee. Um, I believe his departure just happened right beginning of April. I think he was leaving. So if he hasn't quite departed yet, he is is imminently departing. And so just want to take another opportunity to to thank Chris for uh his dedication, his work, his contributions, especially to the facility advisory committee uh over this last um you know, eleven months or so that that he was here. So uh he was a great partner in in the first year, very, very kind to me personally, as I was trying to get my my head around all all the school committee stuff and, you know, what the the F A C's role is and, you know, how we could help positively impact facilities. Um, so thank you to Chris and excited for for Tom's arrival. Uh, during the meeting, we talked uh again a bit about things we we've shared previously, which is just um uh some, you know, discussions of the Cunningham fourth floor programming that is still kind of ongoing in terms of some discussions that they they are looking at um Chris says getting a proposal from an architect um from, I believe, D R A, uh and they're they're starting to kind of look at that space uh and been building it out. We are hopeful that with the support of the capital improvement planning committee, uh and I believe with the support of the warrant committee um uh for the capital uh improvement budgets, um that town meeting will approve that and allocate the two million for the fourth floor um fourth floor work. Uh, so we were talking through kind of how to how to make sure that it's success. Uh, we talked through a little bit of stuff on document storage and one of our committee members is is working to gather some more information just to figure out again that these these are ways of kind of cutting around the edges of of figuring out kind of small, small areas in which we can gain some vital space um in the short and medium term. So that can storage uh and and creating out some storage space remains a big one, especially even as it relates to the Cunningham fourth floor, because there's a lot of uh documents stored currently up there. Um, we continue to talk about the consolidated facility space, which is currently in the basement of the high school of, you know, are there opportunities to move that out? And there's a little bit in limbo with a new consolidated facilities director coming in. So, you know, ideas Chris had might not be ideas that Tom has. So uh we'll need to work on that. And then um, you know, it was shared that the the district's working on kind of a um master uh uh plan around kind of playground improvements. That was another thing we we talked through that not necessarily space related, but just, you know, how do we kind of improve the the playground experience for our students, how to get away from kind of the more antiquated um uh woodchips uh and go to kind of the more modern uh rubberized surfaces, which are more handicap accessible uh and uh safer for kids uh from an impact perspective, you know, how do we and how do we do that in an equitable way across all uh all the schools? Tucker has been a particular place of emphasis, just given how much blacktop surface there is there and how much that space is impacted by the current trash configuration and driveways and and just unique things to kind of, you know, the the small Tucker space. Um uh, those are are things we discussed. Uh, we also got a report from um Chris with his last consolidating facilities report on some um cooling improvements we're trying to do within some classroom spaces. So we we know we don't have building wide H V C. So he's um testing out within some colicot classrooms um uh of renovation, kind of modest renovation, where we're adding ceiling fans and installing some um, I don't know if they're blackout shades, but uh high kind of um uh filtering shades uh in order to reduce the impact of uh heat within those spaces without, you know, doing a full H V C retrofit, which is obviously not something we can afford right now. Uh, so he's doing that in a few model classrooms. Uh, and then we're actually leaving one of the classrooms that's in a similar wing uh so that we can um their ideas to test the impact on temperature. And if this is something that can really help cool down classrooms, um, it's something that should be pretty cost um reasonable cost wise to to implement in other areas within that building as well as over at Tucker, um which also, you know, some of those upper floors that are self facing and get get pretty hot. Um, so uh and and potentially glower as well. So that's that's somebody that he has been working on. Um uh and then a few other updates, which I won't get into, but I think those are those are the highlights I wanted to share. Uh, Anna, anything I missed?
No, we covered all of it.
Any questions? Happy to take you.
Thank you. All sounds good. So uh next, we just approve our minutes from March twentieth. I I added one typo correction in as an edit on page six. Um, looking at other districts. And did anyone else have any changes? All right, then um I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the March twenty 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 four school committee meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Doctor Miranda?
Yes.
Member Rustany?
Yes.
Member Loring?
Yes.
Number two?
I was absent last time.
Okay, good point. So you'll abstain?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And then finally, it's just looking ahead to our next meeting. So as we know, we will be voting the superintendent's evaluation. Um, that will be our last meeting as this committee, sort of bittersweet. That will definitely be your last meeting, member Rustany. It may be my last meeting. Um, so we will have that together next time on the twenty fourth. Um, we will definitely have policy with a number of votes, uh second readings for section B and C. Um, do we know at this time what other subcommittees or reports we plan to have?
Belief's building this meeting next Monday, is that correct, Mark?
Building, okay.
I think we'll have facilities. I think we meet right at five, right, Mark, you want to say? On the twenty fourth?
Yes, yes, that's correct. So.
And then we probably will have your last vendor warrants, Bev. So I'll add finance on here.
And I will also have a meeting with the high school representatives.
Terrific.
I'll also have the third quarter report for you.
Great. Okay. Well, um before we adjourn, I wish everyone safe travels who is traveling in the meantime. And hopefully by the next time we meet, it will really be spring. So um is there anything else?
I just want to say um thank you for um moving meeting to Tuesday. I really appreciate it. I know there were a lot of different conflicts that we're working around today, so I appreciate all of you in that hospital. Thank you.
Bon voyage. Um, and yeah, thank you all again for your for being flexible. And we will be back on the twenty fourth under normal hybrid setting where we'll be in person at the high school um with Milton Access TV. And with that, I'll just make a motion to adjourn nine nine on the dot.
I second.
Okay, thank you, Beverly. Uh, we do have to do a roll call vote. Number two?
Yes.
Member Vargis?
Yes.
Doctor Miranda?
Yes.
Member Rustany?
Yes.
Remember Loring?
Yes.
Yes, me too. All right. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks.
Good night.
Bye.
Thank you.